Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes. Minutes for meetings of November tenth and December first, two thousand and fifteen, to be accepted and approved by the town council. Are there any motions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Brady, second by Councilman Catanjaro, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Item number one for the record, one nay. Item number two, executive session, at the request of Mayor Lombardi. A motion to convene into the executive session pursuant to R I D L section forty-two dash forty-six dash five, for the purpose of discussion and possible vote regarding the potential acquisition of property designated as the Sessors' flat twenty-two A, lot three thirty-two and three thirty-six, further designated as One Funtness Street and eighteen twenty-five, Menel Spring Avenue. Will you move it to executive session? I get a motion to convene?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Houston, second by Councilman Brady, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Yeah, we've been doing it for years, Councilman.
So, Mr. Chairman, we've done some discussion. We also appeared before the purchasing board. As you know, this has been a longstanding proposal to put solar on our closed-down landfill. We think we have a very, very, very good proposal at this point in time. This went out to bid, a re-bid, maybe a year and a half ago. There's been some discussion, but we have everyone on board at this point in time. We have Mr. Palumbo here. We have our attorney, Charles Rogerio, Mr. Palumbo's attorney, Mr. Halperin, that have been in discussion for this proposal at the landfill. I know there was an agreement that the low bidder at the time was Fry Energy, and there's been a partnership between Fry Energy and Mr. Palumbo, and he seems to be satisfied with this. I think it's going to bring us revenue, maybe in a year or so, but I think it's the right thing to do at this point in time. This has been going on much, much too long. So if there are any questions, our attorney's here. Mr. Palumbo's here with his attorney, and hopefully, you will see, you will support this proposal. Long time coming.
Mr. President.
Mr. Palumbo, can you just come up to the mic?
Aye.
State your name for the record.
Ralph A. Palumbo. Preston Halperin, attorney for Southern Sky, Mr. Palumbo's entity. Did you hear that? I'm sorry. Preston Halperin is my name, H-A-L-P-E-R-I-N, attorney.
You can take that mic out if it's too low, yeah.
All right.
Take it out of the holster then.
If you don't mind, I'd like to hand up something that will be helpful, which are basically just some photographs, so you'll get a sense of the projects that Southern Sky has worked on in the past, and will explain why I'm handing them up.
Council, do you have a question?
I was just looking for a short explanation, so some of the calls I've received, and there are a couple people in the audience that had asked me beforehand, seeing as we passed the Fry Energy proposal, and we're here now with the Fry Energy proposal, if it could just be explained why we're looking at voting on another proposal, and how Fry Energy is there or not there.
Okay, I can tell you what we know, and maybe Mr. Palumbo can add to this. Fry Energy, for reasons that I cannot tell you, did not go forward with this project. Fry Energy actually has assigned its rights to a different entity called Dedalus Solar. Dedalus and Mr. Palumbo met, and Dedalus was looking for a company that actually has the experience, the ability, and the financial resources to deliver a project, and Mr. Palumbo has a track record of having actually completed this type of a project, as evidenced by the three photographs you have. These are comparable projects, even bigger than the one we're talking about. So technically, what will be coming before you is the documents that you've, the town has already signed, the lease agreement, the tax agreements, the financing agreements. Those agreements each have a provision allowing them to be assigned to a financially capable entity, and the financially capable entity that is ready to move forward with that deal that you all approved is Mr. Palumbo's company, Southern Sky Renewable Energy, Rhode Island NP, which stands for North Providence. And what we hope to do is to explain to you how these projects actually get into the ground, so you'll be comfortable with the financial wherewithal of the company. You haven't seen the proposed assignments yet, but those documents will be coming to you. Your attorney has them, and the only thing we're changing are the name and the dates. The dates are stale, and the name now needs to be switched over to the Southern Sky entity. We've kept the financial arrangement in place that you have signed on for, and Mr. Palumbo will demonstrate that he's got the experience and the capability to move this project along without any kind of significant delay that you might otherwise encounter if you were to start all over again, for example. That's sort of the background. I don't really know what happened to Fry Energy. Do you, Mr. Palumbo?
Yes, I can. Add some light on to it. Chris Lawson is the principal of Dedalus Solar, and he contacted me through other people in the solar industry. I've developed projects in Massachusetts, and Chris is a Massachusetts resident, and I developed a project close to his town. He reached out to me and just said Fry Energy had backed out. They just didn't have the wherewithal to continue with the project, and Mr. Lawson did not have the desire or the wherewithal to move forward, so he asked me to step in, and we made a contractual agreement where he would, I would buy his rights out in Dedalus Solar, which he had the rights from Fry Energy, which are the three pertinent documents that Mr. Halperin had mentioned.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do, Mr. President, if you don't mind. Will the PPA be the same? Will the lease agreement be the same?
Yes, we embrace the documents as is, other than changing the name to Southern Sky, and we have stale dates, as Mr. Halperin said.
I heard you say that, but I just wanted to be sure that those agreements would stay in place only with the name changes, as you said.
Yes, I can confirm that.
How many megawatts was this project, again?
The initial layout that I've done, and I don't have access to the property yet, Mr. Councilman, but I was able to go through Google and figure it out. It's, in my initial review, there's 12 acres of usable land on the cap of the landfill, which I can fit inside 2.5 megawatts on that. And for perspective, 2.5 megawatts is about 7,500 panels.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Originally, I think they were going to give us 3.2, and whatever we weren't generating, if my memory serves me correctly, we were going to be able to get from another renewable source. They were, I think they were guaranteeing us 3.2. Does that still stand that we would be able to do that through another project that you have?
If I may clarify, the project nameplate is 2.5 megawatts, and simply says 7,500 panels, they're 300 watt panels, 2.5 megawatts. Those panels, that 2.5 megawatts will produce about 3.2 million kilowatt hours a year.
Gotcha.
So I'm sorry for that, but there's a distinction between the two. Nameplate and output.
Kilo, mega? I got it. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, as I previously voted and stated, I'm in favor of the concept of solar power, the first source of the town's electric, should save the town money, and the lease of the land we've already agreed upon. So with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue to support this concept, subject to the council receiving the amended documents and the documents required to approve an assignment of agreements.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Katanzaro. Do you have any questions? Are there none of those in favor?
There is someone in the audience who just raised their hand. Mr. President.
My name is Jeroz Andosha. I've been a resident of the town of North Providence for 60 years. I think the contract was awarded to Fry.
Can we have your name again, please?
Please. Jeroz Andosha.
Thank you.
I think the contract was awarded to Fry Industries, which is bankrupt. I think they're bankrupt. Am I correct or am I incorrect?
As I stated, I did not use the words bankrupt, but they didn't have the financial wherewithal to continue with the project, so that's another way of saying it.
So they're just going to turn this over to another company, but a bid? I think they're running state law, purchasing law. It has to go for re-bid. I might be wrong. We've got legal counsel here. He can answer the question.
Thank you, sir. My name is Charles Rogerio, and I serve as counsel to the Purchasing Committee. The contract, the initial contract, was awarded through a competitive seal bidding process to Fry Energy, and subsequent to that competitive seal process, there was multiple agreements that Mr. Halperin had indicated that the town had entered into between Fry and the town of North Providence. Pursuant to each of those contracts, the development rights, the net metering and finance agreement, and the pilot agreement were all assignable to subsequent assignees by Fry, subject to the council's approval. So based upon the fact that this matured into multiple contracts and is no longer just simply a competitive bid that was entered into, but rather contracts that the town entered into, they are freely assignable pursuant to each of their provisions.
Thank you.
Well, if it's legal, I'm okay with that, but I think it should be put up for re-bid. You know, time has passed. Maybe get a better deal.
Thank you. Motion been made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselors?
Thank you.
Okay, item number six. 1838 Grilling Bar LLC DBA, 1838 Bar and Grill summons were delivered through Stephen Campbell, president and registered agent of 1838 Grilling Bar LLC DBA, 1838 Bar and Grill located at 1838 Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV license, licensing, and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the failure to complete the requirements to obtain said licenses.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the town council. This here is.
Say your name.
Speak it to him. This is a problem that is really my fault. What happened is I actually received a letter from the town clerk. Had I opened it up on time, I would have solved my problem here and not had to take up your time. I was studying and taking my CPA exam, and I kind of let my business ventures kind of sit aside for a while, and I'm done with that. I finished December 1st, so I'm back, and what I'd like to ask this council, if they would, if I could have a short, reasonable time, I'm sure I could meet with the clerk and file the paperwork and do what I should have done last month.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Campbell? Okay, as I stated, I think I'd like to entertain a motion to extend, give him 60 days to try and get his paperwork in.
That's more than reasonable.
Okay.
So moved, second.
Motion been made by Councilman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you. Good night.
I think we have to continue the summons.
Item number seven, private detective license. Town council will consider approval of a renewal of a private detective license from Michael Phillips, 31 Devail Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island.
Good evening, council, Mr. President.
Good evening.
Good evening. Michael Phillips?
Thank you for coming. This is a renewal. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Phillips? All his paperwork is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Juski to, Councilman Juski, approve, seconded by Councilman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, entertainment license. Town council will consider approval of an entertainment license for presentation at Columbus Club at 15 Bassett Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. Do we have anybody here from Columbus Club?
Isn't it the same as what they've always done? Just, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
The entertainment application is the same as Fry here. Mary Anne always verifies that. Okay, motion been made by Councilman Katanzaro, approve, seconded by Councilman Juski. Do you have any questions? Are there none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. Item number nine, Hazard Mitigation Plan. Receive a request of Robert Howe, EMA Director, to present for discussion a possible vote for new North Providence Hazard Mitigation Plan. How you doing?
Good evening, counselors. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Robert Howe, Director of Emergency Management, Town of North Providence.
The, back in the beginning of 2015, the state of Rhode Island, Rhode Island EMA offered an opportunity for communities throughout the state to look into what we call a hazard mitigation plan. It is a plan, first off, that allows communities to invest and get federal funding through different opportunities, not so much with regards to recovery after a disaster such as blizzards, et cetera, but it's a preventive medicine, per se, to combat things that could happen in the town of North Providence. I wrote what they call an investment justification to the Rhode Island EMA back in the spring, in March of 2015, which was approved, and we were allocated $15,000 as a federal grant to the town of North Providence. This wasn't something I did solely by myself. It was an investment made by the mayor's office, the fire chief, the police chief, all the different operating functions of the town of North Providence. We collectively put all our tools in our toolbox and saw what we need to function better for the town. With that grant being approved by the federal government, by FEMA, it is not something that we can actually utilize, that $15,000, for my salary or for any entity, but it's to utilize a contractor. So I went in through the state's, the system the state works with. We acquired a group called the Maguire Group out of Providence. They're an engineering firm. They're well-known. They're nation, really nationally known throughout the country, with an excellence in EMA work, and I'd like to introduce, if I could, Carissa Lord, who's been a partner with us for North Providence, who's helped us along with these proceedings to get this hazard mitigation plan in place. I emailed all of you. I don't know if everybody got it. I think I mentioned you, counselor. It went to maybe your wrong email. If you didn't get it, I will resubmit that tomorrow to you. This plan is going to allow us to get federal funds in the future, like I said, for preventive maintenance. In the past, I don't believe the town has had this hazard mitigation plan in place. I think it's the first time forthcoming for us, and I would ask that approval from the town council for approval to get this passed, so we can move on forward, bring it back to the FEMA level, and get it certified at their level, so we can, in the future, if, for instance, we need to purchase equipment, we need to go, like I said, again, preventive. When we have a disaster, a disaster strikes, that's a different road we go down. This is just giving us opportunities to get more grant funding. In the past, we've had our public work director in the past look for funding for different things, to help out that division, that discipline, and because we didn't have this in place, we were denied that opportunity. Now that we have this in place, with your approval, I can move forward and get the funding that we need for different projects forthcoming, and I would ask approval from the review from the town council, and if you'd like to approve next month or whatever the case may be, to review all the documents that you have in front of you. It'd certainly be appreciated.
Anybody have any questions?
I do, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Howe. Good job. Great document. When I was reviewing the document, however, on page 38, you had listed in 5.3.1 flood-prone drainage systems in streets, and among the streets that are high-risk that you listed are Elliott and Barrett Avenue, and then the dock. and then the document goes on to indicate different actions for several of the high-risk areas. And you listed that so, you had secured, or the town had secured so much money in grants from different sources to remediate these problems. But I didn't see Elliott Avenue and Barrett listed, and I didn't want to bring it to your attention, that, so that you would know that the State General Assembly granted the council to a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to remediate that flooding problem, and it just wasn't among those that you had in there.
Okay, I could have missed that, Ms. Brady. The new flood plain maps had come out recently?
Right.
Thank you. Okay. Elliott and Barrett Avenue, okay. Which are coming right off Middle Spring Avenue and that Hilli section?
Yes.
All right. The, uniquely enough, I would, I would argue the fact that if you're going to have flooding in those areas, if you're coming down the vertical slope of Elliott and Barrett, your flooding issue would be more down at the Middle Spring Avenue. But I can investigate this and get an answer for you?
Well, we've had an engineer go out and put together a plan to start working on it already.
Okay. If he could, if it's possible for that engineer to touch base with me with regards to...
You can probably get in touch with him if you ask the mayor's office, because I think it's Mr. D'Amico.
Okay.
Who is the engineer, and then maybe you can go over some of that information with him.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Dave D'Amico, we'll put Bob in touch with Dave D'Amico, he does some extensive work on that area.
Does anybody have any other questions? All right, while we're doing this, I think this Councilman Katanzaro brought up a point, this needs to be put in the form of an ordinance.
Okay.
So it's just, you know, more concrete than maybe the existing plan, so...
Would that be reviewed, your consideration?
Okay, yes.
Thank you very much.
While I, if I could, while I have the opportunity, with regards to the last two blizzards we've had, getting, I could sit in front of the council very often, I've been in touch with the mayor's office with regards to recouping our losses that we've taken in the last, in Juneau, and what's the other name? That name's killing me, Nemo, I don't know what that's all about. But the point being is, initially, two years ago, when we had the first blizzard, just to get, get you up to date, working with the mayor, myself, Frank Bursey, who was the deputy director of EMA and director of special operations for the town, we, we went to the FEMA and put all our eggs in a basket to get our, recoup our losses. To let you know that, that is still not necessarily being litigated, but FEMA dropped the ball and that the town, and notified the mayor and the director, administration, that we are still waiting for our reimbursement for that first storm. Second time around, again, I acquired the services of the Maguire to assist us with this storm we just had recently, last year. We're looking at recouping upwards to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in funding that we spent for the last snowstorm this past February. Engaged with those two storms, the hazard mitigation plan and the operations for EMA, we're looking closely to a half a million dollars coming into the town's coffers. If everything comes to fruition, that's what we're going to recoup. And that's what a lot of help and cooperation. I want to thank the mayor, the director of force, with regards to that, because I've been dealing closely with them, and I'm taking the opportunity while I get in front of the Town Council to let you know where we are to speak with the EMA. So things are getting done, it's just the, I'm the silent partner, but you guys know how to find me. Certainly, Mrs. Katanzaro has my number, I think a few of the Counselors have my number. So whenever you have any questions, feel free to call me, please.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm sorry, I, you know what, Mary Ann, I do not include you in that. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Please, please do, Brady. And I just need your name.
Ms. Carissa, C-A-R-I-S-S-A. Last name is Lord, L-O-R-D, and I'm with CDR Maguire.
CDR?
C as in Charlie, D as in Daniel, R as in Robert, Maguire.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to publicly thank Bob for the job that he does for us. He calls us three or four times a week, he's on top of his game, and I think we may realize some revenue in the next six months, nine months or so. But I'm also assured, Bob, that, you know, whatever needs to be done by our solicitor's office will take care of it, to make sure that we are requesting the necessary refund for the town. Thank you very much. Bob, thanks again.
Thank you. Have a great year.
Thank you.
Item number ten, public comment at town meetings. Receive a request from Brendan Stargrass to appear for discussion on public comment at town meetings. Barry Schiller will also be present.
Happy New Year, counsel.
Happy, happy New Year to you.
Hi, I'm, well, I'm going to talk for about maybe two minutes tonight. I did a really high-level presentation for you guys, and I've actually wanted to do this for a while, probably a few years now, and I just haven't gotten around to it. And so I figured out it's a good time, it's a new year, it's a good time to talk about this. But what I'm suggesting is, and I know a lot of people agree that, just a, a public comment section of the agenda would be good, for a lot of reasons. And I have no trouble getting in touch with my Counselors, the mayor's always accessible to me, I've never had trouble approaching anyone here, to tell you the truth, you know? So it has nothing to do with that. But I think what it has to do with more, when there's short notice, things happen on short notice, the council meets once a month, they don't meet every week, they don't meet every other week, it's once a month. So sometimes people just want to come down and talk about things, could be good, could be bad, you know? There was a time when we didn't have cell phones or email or telephones, and back then people came down to the town meetings. So I think it's, it's in our tradition. But I just wanted to go over a couple of points here, and these are just my personal opinions. Public comment section, in my opinion, is not illegal, under Rhode Island Constitution, section twenty-one, it's not prohibited. Under Rhode Island Open, Rhode Island Open Meetings Act, open forum section, it's not prohibited. I found the most restrictive would be in our Town Charter, section two-one-six, and it isn't very restrictive, it only applies to special meetings, where something like that would have to be on the agenda. So, again, really high level, and then also, I, I wanted to find the most recent example I could find of, of a town implementing this type of thing. And it was a town of Westwood I could find in August two thousand and fifteen. They actually, I'll give you four points I found from my investigation in that. I think this one's actually really flexible and probably a little bit too lax, but they actually have two public comment sections, one at the beginning, one at the end. Public comment section at the beginning is reserved for non-agenda items, comments are not part of the record unless put into writing and read into the record. So, the public comment section at the end applies to agenda items and is part of the record. So obviously, we could see having two might not be necessary, one might be more than enough. And then Westwood does not have a time limit, I happen to disagree with that. I think that, President, you're more than capable of making a good judgment off, there's a hundred people, and I think, you know, you could make a good judgment on how long people should be allowed to speak for. We can't, I obviously stay here till four in the morning, so. And I know at the meetings that we have had that did allow public comment, I believe the last one was about the senior center. You know, I believe that the public had a chance to speak, that was a, you know, a special meeting for public comment. But I think, I think just having one at the end of every meeting would alleviate, you know, tension, and you know, again, I don't want to rehash old business, but last month, it was very short notice, that was the bottom line, it was short notice, I think people would have tried to get things on the agenda, but it just wasn't time to do that, so. That's all I really had, and I'd make myself available to you. I have some documents here, I'm not going to pass them out, I'm just going to email them to all of you, and if you want to look at them, you can, and if you want any more investigation from me, I'll make myself available. I also wanted to hand this over to my friend Barry Schiller, who, who wanted to talk about his experiences on several committees, commissions that do have this. Before I do that, any questions though, for me?
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Barry Schiller, and I just wanted to say briefly that I've been on two boards that created public comment, the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority Board, and also the State Planning Council's Transportation Advisory Committee. And when we added it, there were a few people worried that they would be overwhelmed, or if somebody would go on on irrelevant topics. It hasn't been a problem, it could, could many times, nobody came for the public comment, but when they did, it usually was worthwhile, and it was interesting to members of the board, because we did want to know, especially at Ripley, what people thought who use the system, and I'm sure you want to know what people think here. For myself, I agree with Brendan, I've had no trouble being on the Environment Commission when I needed to come to the council to arrange an agenda item. But not everybody is, is, is as aware of town procedures, and I, I believe that Rhode Island needs more civic engagement from the citizens. I think people would be more positive about government if, if they had an opportunity every month to, to explain what they were concerned about. As a person who's done that at the Board of Higher Education, I had worked at Rhode Island College, and I went to a couple of their meetings, and they had public comment. And I must say, I felt more positive about the board for allowing me to speak. I, I think it would be good for our town if people felt more positive and thought more, more engaged with, with town government, which I think you would be happy to have people appreciate what you do if they came here, and I hope that you'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eleven, temporary finance director appointed. See request from Brian Quirk to appear alongside with other residents to discuss the ramifications of a mayor's decision to temporarily appoint Ms. Bailey as finance director.
Good evening, my name is Brian Quirk. Thank you again for putting me on the agenda and following these two gentlemen, they couldn't have said it any better. What I'd like to do is just elaborate a little bit more of what these gentlemen had to say, and I, I do also believe that by putting things off as far as public comments, the danger of that is that a lot of things get, it can get blown out of proportion, it can get misconstrued. And it, it does create a lot of animosity, it creates a lot of tension, a lot of emotions, and, and unnecessarily, I think, and it's not healthy. But to basically, well, basically the reason why I'm here, I, I'd like to, just to discuss what has transpired since last month's meeting. And really, to me, I, I don't feel there was anything really harmful. I mean, first of all, there was a public outcry, but, but why? And it was a temporary appointment to a finance director position, and I think that was the key word, it was just temporary. And I think a lot of people did overreact, and to even compound the problem, residents having no say in the matter, I think things really escalated to a point where it became irrational. And the way I see it, I, I, I don't see where any laws were broken, so as far as discussion, the only thing that really, that could have been discussed at that particular time last month, is maybe a discussion, maybe what, a moral, ethical issue, or, or lack of, but any hypothetical situation, if you will, if you did, Mr. President, if we had a discussion, I, I don't see where it could have gone anywhere, I mean, it couldn't have gone to a vote, it couldn't have gone, the, the only discussion, I think it would have been over before it began, because everything involved in that particular issue last month, basically, I think that someone here on this panel would have brought up immediately that it's not the council's decision of the matter, but that decision would have rather been the mayor's decision, and he made that decision. And as far as things that I heard about people getting riled about, well, you know, we're having discussions about this individual should be fired, whatnot, if people recall, and if they follow situations over two years ago, okay, that there was a petition, it was submitted to the town clerk's office, and that was basically, to have the personnel board, okay, they, they were to basically make the decision of the fate of the individual that was involved. And that decision was rendered down, and that was, that person wasn't fired, so really, the mayor doing what he did, he had every right. Now, I'm not picking sides or anything, I'm just stating facts here, but, you know, some good things, some bad things came out of this whole ordeal. The negative being that it could have opened like a Pandora's Box, where a lot of things for the past were being rehashed, and a lot of people that don't follow certain issues, all right, it starts to get all mixed in where I think it retards as far as the growth and moving forward with this town. But the positive thing is tonight, we have gentlemen here that generated discussion about open meetings. And I think it is a good idea, whether it's before a meeting, after a meeting, I, I think it's good to address issues at that time. But as far as the primary reason, okay, and why I feel it was important for me to get on this agenda, because of all the things that happened, I just felt they were all distractions, and it took away from what we really should have been focusing on. And that was, you know, as far as the, the irony to this whole ordeal, and the irony being that a prior council provided all the tools needed to rectify this entire ordeal, and that if this council, along with the mayor, would only abide by the law and appoint the members of the Ethics Committee required of them under the ordinance they passed and signed into law over five years ago, we wouldn't even be having this discussion at all. An independent and partial body would have addressed this issues either months or even years ago. So therefore, I come to you tonight, all right, basically to ask this council to make a decision, either abide by the law, the Ethics Ordinance, or repeal the Ethics Ordinance. And I, and I think that's something important to address. Five years too long, we're well over five years, five years, three months now, and as each day goes by, whether you realize or not, this town, we're breaking the law because that is, that ordinance is a law, it's on the books, and we, we have to come to decision. We just can't keep moving forward ignoring these things, because matters like last month or whatever can arise at any time, and these things can be addressed, they can be taken care of. And they can, they, they shouldn't even get to this point where it escalates to, to, you know, extreme democracy, if you will. So again, I'll, I'll ask once again, is, is the council willing to make one decision or the other?
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Quirk? Oh, I thank you for coming out, and I think, you know, something we have to think about, and I'll take your testimony, and...
Well, the Ethics Ordinance, it is on the books, and you haven't appointed anybody for the, for the panel, the mayor also, I mean, it's, you're, you're required to appoint three people to the panel, the mayor also appoints three people, those six, appoint one other neutral person? It's as simple as that.
I'll have our legal counsel look into, you know, the procedure and how we go about appointing people, and I will take it under consideration.
And you do realize it was unanimous, unanimously passed?
I did.
Okay. And thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Item number twelve, open meetings, requests, receive requests from Gary Arnold, who will appear to discuss open meetings.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Two thousand and seventeen, huh? My name is Gary Arnold, North Providence, and I just want to make sure everyone has a healthy, happy year, all right? To start it off right, last year didn't end up very well for me. I was at this council meeting, and I had a request to speak, and I wasn't able to do that. So I took a look at the charter, and lo and behold, the charter says you got a request to speak seven days before. I got to get it in to the town clerk. However, there's a waiver there, if you make a request, then the council, council should be able to take a look at that and say, you know what, we're going to vote on it, and see whether or not we'll have somebody speak, so you can override the notice. Is that, is that right, or is that something that I, I misread?
I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Arnold, because if you recall, before the meeting, you asked me about that, and didn't I explain that to you right there in that corner?
You, I asked you, I did ask you, yeah.
Yeah, I said to you, the only way you can speak on the agenda tonight is to come up and ask, and we take a vote, and by unanimous vote of the council, you'd be allowed to speak.
I asked you, and you said, I don't want to get in the middle of it, whatever that meant.
I said to you, the only way you could speak is by unanimous vote of the council, and you never came up and asked me.
How did I get up to, how, how do I get in front of you to ask you?
At the end of the meeting, I was expecting that you would come up and request the council...
But when do I get, when can you do that? I mean, just stand up and raise my hand and say, can I speak to?
You could have came to the microphone at the end of the meeting, I expected that you would do that.
I've made it pretty clear.
I'm not, I just want to let...
I made it pretty clear when I was showing, I thought, respect by asking you without disrupting, you know, meetings, and said, I'd like to be able to address...
And I told you how you could go about doing that.
I, I'm sorry, the only thing I heard is you don't want to get in the middle of that.
Well, I said to you, I said, you know, I had, I said, several people had asked me to speak, I really don't want to go down this road because you didn't put yourself on the agenda, however...
That part I heard.
Okay, the only way the agenda could be amended is if by a unanimous vote of the council, and you never came up and asked. I can't, I mean...
That part I didn't hear, though. I didn't hear that part.
Everyone in this audience might want to speak right now, I can't go to every individual and say, you want to speak, and then I have to take a vote. So I assumed at some point you were going to come up and ask me, can I speak, and you never did.
All right, believe me, if I thought that was an option, you know I would have stood up and put something...
I know.
I'm not a shy person.
How do you know?
So, all right, maybe I've got, that's a clear thing, I understand now, so if I have something to say, I'll be sure to address that at a meeting or something like that. Because I've always been very quiet here, and I'm trying to control myself. But here's the thing that really, and it's almost kind of listening to somebody's other discussions here, it's the same thing, is that the public does want to contribute and wants to participate. And I know on the other side, most of you want the public to have some comments, because you want to hear what people are thinking, because after all, you are representing the public, all right? And you only have certain contacts and limited contacts, I'm sure, but people that you don't normally talk to, who you're good to hear their, you know, their inputs or something like that. And the way the meetings are set up, it limits how people will think and how people will be willing to come forward. I come to most of these meetings, and I am embarrassed by the churnup because of the lack of churnup. And I'm afraid a lot of that is because people are turned off. There's no reason to come here to listen to a bunch of background noise, because I, you know, we don't know a lot of the things that you're approving, the financial, the planning, the things of that nature, you've all had your discussions, you're approving them, but from somebody sitting in the podium over here, what are you talking about? I mean, it just doesn't have a lot of value and a lot of interest to residents to come here. That's one reason I would say you don't get much of churnup. Another one is you almost feel like you're gagged as a person, you know, that you really can't express things. And maybe with the clarification you just made, we ought to make that a public announcement. By the way, you want to come in and say something? You can come in, put your hand up and make a request, and they can vote you down, or they can say, okay. But you ought to put that, put that out there someplace, because I didn't know that, and I've been pretty active in this stuff, all right? And I want to just make a couple of comments. The town council does its thing to its way. The school committee has a different approach. Now, I'm pretty active in the school committee, in the school. I go to all the meetings, most of the meetings, I don't go to all of them. I comment a lot of those meetings. And how I comment, and how anybody else can comment, is when they walk in the door to the school committee meeting, there's a piece of paper that they can sign if they want to make a comment at that, at that meeting. They pick up that piece of paper, and they bring it up to the front, and at the appropriate time, there's some section, anybody who wants to speak, and they'll call off the names, and you get up and say your piece, whatever it might be. Now, what that does is that builds trust, confidence, and transparency. That builds support. Now, the schools right now represent about 60% of our budget. They're the biggest part of our budget. And what they're doing is they are embracing having the public come to their meetings and talk. They want support, they want people to understand what they're doing. They want people to understand where this money is going towards. They want to know, they want you to know what the values are and what the obstacles are. They're very transparent. So they're building trust and confidence. I don't think that goes on in this town council. I've been on both, both sides of it, and that's what I'm telling you right now, that's my impression. I don't have any hard feelings towards anybody, but that's the way a lot of people feel. So I'd like to ask you, is that a consideration? Have you ever thought about that? Is that something?
Actually, I was waiting for you to finish, because I have a few comments. First of all, thank you for bringing this up. I think this is a productive conversation. And I have thought about it in the past, and I think the reason why our Charter was set up the way it was, was we never had public comment in the past. And my one, I shouldn't say concern, but my one issue is, is I, us council people, I'm not speaking for everyone, but we like to know what's on the agenda so we can prepare information, so when taxpayers come before us, they can leave here with an answer, or at least we're heading in the direction of an answer. And my fear is, would that get lost? I don't know the answers, I'm just, you know, speaking out loud, would that get lost in a public comment section if someone came and wanted an answer on an issue, and we're not prepared to help that person that night?
So you defer it to the next...
Right, right, because I'm just saying, that was, that, you know, at least, the one thing about this setup is, at least, you're going to come out of the meeting knowing that we can at least start sending you in the right direction with some answer. But I understand what you're saying, and I am open.
You want people to come here, and you want people to participate, that's the way you're going to do it? If you do it the way you're doing it right now, you'll have your half a dozen people show up, they won't say anything. You going to feel good about that? I wouldn't. If I was sitting here looking out at the crowd and hearing myself doing all the talking, I don't think I'd like that. I wouldn't, really. And I'd want you to think the same way, because I think that's been one of the fallacies I've looked at years and years and years, the same thing. And it's unfortunate. I mean, I'd get more involved, I mean, I would be outgoing from a council perspective. I would be selling myself and saying, hey, guys, we're representing you. Of course, there's other things we have to talk about there, too, in terms of how you represent us and how you're representing us, but that's another subject. But I'm just, the main thing we're talking about, the open meetings, I'm not satisfied with, you know, the understanding, obviously, I don't understand it, but I'll bet you that it's not as many people do understand. And I think you ought to publicize that, or put it out somehow, make sure it's put on the website. That'd be a good start.
Anybody have any questions from Donald, the comments?
I do. Thank you for coming up.
I'm not in your district, go ahead.
No, that doesn't matter where you are. Thank you for coming this evening to let us know what you think and feel, but just to assure you, every committee reports back to the council, and they report back in minute form. And the minutes are entered, the clerk receives them, every council member gets a copy of them, and then this council makes the determination based on the recommendations of those committees.
Sure.
So they, there isn't anything being done in committees that isn't open to the public.
And I want to know something about that, or does that involve me?
The committee meetings are like the council meetings, they're posted on the town's website, they're posted at the Secretary of State's office with the agenda for what items will be listed.
Agenda we see, yeah.
They're posted, they're public knowledge, they're actual public meetings. So just like this meeting tonight was advertised with the Secretary of State...
So you're saying we could ask questions about the financial...
You're more than welcome to come. You come every, you've come to Finance Committee meetings, so...
Count on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 13, Tax Stabilization. Council President Odiola requests discussion and vote regarding guidelines for tax stabilization agreements. I'm going to combine that with item number 14, Tax Stabilization Guidelines. Councilman Stephanus requests discussion and vote regarding creating guidelines for tax stabilization agreements. Do you want to go first?
Sure. Mr. President, I placed this item on the agenda this evening because we've come to a point in this town where we need to start spur in economic development. And in order to do that, I think we need to look at potentially creating a program. And we need to stop holding meetings to investigate how that program will work, how that program will benefit the town, and what exact guidelines we're going to put in place. And I know Councilwoman Kat Zaro has put this on in the past, so I would like tonight to refer this to the Finance Committee so we can start the process.
Motion to be made by Councilman Stephanus.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hill. Any questions?
Mr. President, I know last month we had asked for some things for the Economic Development Committee, and they are also to assist with this tax stabilization program. So I'm not sure if we received that information, but they go hand in hand, being able to get that information from GIS and then putting the program into existence, because if we're going to look into tax stabilization, we need to know the base of the businesses that may be coming to us, or the potential businesses that are going to ask us for a tax stabilization plan. So if we don't know that, it'll be hard for us to create something, or we'll just have people randomly asking us for tax stabilization because they need tax relief. But if we know the vacancies, we know what properties are out there and what development there is, it's going to help us with this program. They go hand in hand, and that's what we discussed in the Economic Development Committee back in March. So we do need to get that additional information. If you get it, you know, it should go with this program, too.
Okay, and I also have a couple of case studies and ordinances that were adopted that I'm going to, I'm going to forward them to the court tomorrow, and forward them up to all of you, and then have them refer to Finance.
I also, Mr. President, went at the meeting, the Economic Development Committee meeting, I had gathered some information from other municipalities that do have tax stabilization guidelines, so I'd be more than happy to collect those, give them to the clerk, and ask her to get those out as well.
Okay, this is good. I think if we can all come together and kind of come up with one, one...
Mm-hmm.
And, so I have a motion to refer...
So moved.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Brady, second by, and motion to be made by Councilman Kat Zaro, second by Councilman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. Item number 15, Road Resurfacing Program. Councilman Stephanus requests discussion and vote regarding creating a neighborhood road resurfacing program. Councilman?
Mr. President, I think it's time in this town that we started to look at the roads and the infrastructure. And I think we need to start to determine which roads that we need, that are immediate, that we need to start resurfacing. Like every and all communities in this state, every municipality in the state is faced with the same problems. So what I would like to do is refer this to Finance and bring in a consultant, a company who can advise us how we can determine which roads need to be resurfaced from worst to best, one. Two, look at what potentially that cost will be. And three, talk about issuing a bond for that cost.
Does anybody have any questions?
Sounds a little familiar. I think I recommended that probably a year and a half ago, that we bring in a company...
I've only been on here a year, so if you want them to join me with it, how's that?
Right, but I'm saying...
Let's work together on 16.
No, but when I, when I proposed it, it was shot down by the administration, saying it wasn't a good idea. We didn't need a company to come in and assess the streets, we could do it ourselves. And there was a list of reasons why it wasn't a good idea. So I'm absolutely in agreement with you, it should have been done the two years ago when it was brought up. So I'm happy to support you and agree with you to send it to the Finance Committee to do that.
Can you say that again?
I'm happy to support you and send it to the Finance Committee so we can do this.
Thank you.
Would you like me to say it one more time?
No, I'm good.
Three times a charm.
Three times a charm.
That made my ear.
Okay. Happy New Year.
Mr. Chairman, now that we're on the subject of roadway paving, just want to put this council on notice that we will be coming to you after discussing with a few of you the issue of roadway paving, to maybe think about a bond, bond issue, so that we can pave most of the roads that need paving. And all that could ever happen, it's going to take quite a few dollars. And to the issue of hiring someone, hey, look, I mean, if that's what the council wants to do, I'll support it. Do I think we need a person to do that? I'm not sure, but I think the bottom line is, whatever we could do to work together to get the roads paved, as many roads paved as possible. But we will be coming to you in the near future to talk about issuing a bond specifically for infrastructure roadway paving, so I want to let you know. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, motion to refer, Councilman Stephanus's roadway paving plan to Finance.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Stephanus, second by Councilman Kat Zaro. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. Item number 17, Introduction of Ordinance 16-001.
Forgot 16, item 16.
Oh, oh, 16. Resident parking on Rockwell Street. Councilman Stephanus requests discussion and vote on amendment ordinance 03-02, Chapter 19, Article 10, Section 19-30 regarding no parking except for resident parking on Rockwell Street to remove two no parking, resident-only signs adjacent to commercial property located at 1759 Mineral Spring Avenue. Councilman?
Mr. President, the current ordinance that's in place, I respect. There is resident-only parking on all of Rockwell. Now, when you take a look at Rockwell Avenue, from the corner of Mineral Spring Avenue, there is, I don't know the name of the property, but 1759 Mineral Spring, has kangaroos, it has, I think, a hairstylist, Genesis. So what's occurring is Genesis has now moved into the property. And to the right of the building are two no-parking signs, so they're connected to the commercial property. So I understand that there's no no-parking on both sides of the street for residents, but I don't understand why the individuals who are frequenting the location, whether it be Genesis or any other business in that building, can't park on the side of that building. Why are we hindering any business owner or causing them an economic hardship by placing the two signs? If I own that commercial piece of property, I would be pretty disturbed with those two signs there. So I'm not looking, I'm not asking this council to remove the signs next to the residents' homes. I'm not looking to ask to remove the signs on the other side of the street, the street, the side of the street that faces Lowe's. The only thing I am asking for is for the two no-parking resident-only signs to be removed that are connected to 1759 Mineral Spring Avenue.
Those are right in front of that parking lot, right?
Correct.
Is that the change is?
So, correct.
You know, you got to check that. I don't know if that's resident parking only, if it's just plain no parking.
No, it is. It says, it says resident only.
Did you check the ordinance?
Yeah. It was signed in all three, I think.
Because I thought it was just plain no parking.
It's resident, both sides from Mineral Spring to the end.
And I think the sign at the, toward the back of the building to the street, there's an ordinance that you can't park 25 feet from the end of the street anyway.
Right.
So that sign there is well over 25 feet behind the stop sign anyway, so you can't even park there. Right? So you want that whole strip?
Right. You can't put any car up against the building, because then it falls within that 25 feet of the stop sign.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So what I think we should do is refer this to legal counsel to have you draw up an ordinance. Is there any favor of that?
Sumo.
Sumo, second.
Okay, motion to be made by Councilman Stephanus, I mean, Councilman Kat Zaro, second by Councilman Stephanus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. Item number 17, Introduction of Ordinance 16-001. Ordinance amending Chapter 19, Article 10, Section 19... Chapter nineteen, Article ten, Section nineteen, forty-seven, C of the Code. Ordinance to the town of Rockwell, entitled "One-way Stop Signs," provide for a stop sign on Allen Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion, motion to introduce for a public hearing.
Okay, motion to be made by Councilman Juicy, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Brady. Any questions?
Yes, um, this is to, this one is to amend the fees?
Yeah.
Is this one to amend the?
Allen Avenue. Allen Avenue.
Oh, I'm on the wrong page. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. Item number eighteen, introduction, introduction of ordinance sixteen dash zero zero two, ordinance amending Chapter nineteen, Article two, Section nineteen twelve of the Code of Ordinance to the town of Rockwell, providing motor vehicles and traffic, heavy traffic to increase fines for violations. Do I have a motion to introduce for a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? Are there none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. Item number nineteen, introduction of ordinance sixteen dash zero zero three. An ordinance amending, ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero five, which amended Chapter nineteen, Article seven, Section nineteen dash thirty of the Code of Ordinance of the town of Rockwell, entitled "No Parking on Certain Streets Generally," provide for certain parking restrictions on lookout avenues of the town of Rockwell, right? Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. Item number twenty, amusement licenses, pursued applications for the renewal of amusement devices, amusement centers, coin-operated pool tables, non-coin-operated pool tables, miniature bowling, and auto wrecking and salvage. Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve two thousand sixteen amusement devices for Bailey's Pub, Friendly's, Greystone Social Club, L.A. Bailey's, Larry's Lounge, Leinensville, A.C., Fitz's Pub, Two, Presentation Columbus Club, Sunnyside Recreation Club, Twins Pizza, Drexel Recreation Club?
So moved. Second.
Motion to be made by Councilwoman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Do I have the, I have a motion to, uh, I have a motion to approve an amusement center for our abilities?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Coin-op pool tables. Do I have a motion to approve a Bailey's Pub, Dodge, Ruby's, Post Twenty-Nine, Larry's Lounge, Sunnyside Recreation Club?
So moved. Second.
Motion to be made by Councilwoman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? Are there none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Ninth, I have a motion to approve non-coin-op tables for Greystone Social Club and our abilities.
So moved. Second.
Motion to be made by Councilwoman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? Are there none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Miniature bowling. Do I have a motion to approve miniature bowling for the Greystone Social Club?
So moved. Second.
Motion to be made by Councilwoman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? Are there none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Do I have a motion to approve auto wrecking and salvage for D'Agostino's Auto Salvage, North Providence Auto Salvage, and Can Auto Auto Salvage?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? Are there none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number twenty-one, board appointments. Town council discussion in action with regards to appointments to meet the following board. A, purchasing board.
Who is the person? I'm making a motion.
Okay, do I have a motion to reappoint Emily Petteruvi, Sopramo?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilwoman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilman Fiole. Any questions? Are there none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. G, board of trustees.
Do I have a motion to reappoint Anthony Campanelli?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. C, board of trustees, public libraries.
Diane.
Do I have a motion to approve Diane, to reappoint Diane Muni-Ranch?
So moved. Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilwoman Katanzaro. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. D, personnel board. Do I have a motion to reappoint Stephen Piamundi?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilwoman Katanzaro. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. E, housing authority. Do I have a motion to reappoint Carol Ponorelli?
So moved. Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilwoman Katanzaro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Planning board. Do I have a motion to appoint Chin Tishay, J. Robert Drive, North Providence, to the planning board?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. Zoning board. Do I have a motion to reappoint Peter Tabarrelli?
So moved. Second.
Motion to be made by Councilwoman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Fiole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Associate Municipal Court Judge. Do I have a motion to reappoint Valentino Lombardi?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Historic District Commission. Do I have a motion to reappoint Mark Tanzi?
So moved. Second.
Motion to be made by Councilwoman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it. Tree Warden.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Fiole. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number twenty-three, ordinance committee report. Town council discussion in action with regards to the ordinance committee report presented by Councilman Juicy.
We had a meeting tonight, and, uh, it was on the new fee schedules, and we've decided to table it, uh, for further study, so I'm gonna recommend that it be tabled.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any questions? All those opposed?
Page twenty-two.
Item number twenty-two, Estefan Policy Committee Report. Town council discussion in action with regards to the policy committee report presented by Councilman Warren. Councilman?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just received this from Councilman Warren late this afternoon, it's on your desk. Um, the Rhode Island DOT was asked by the council to do a traffic study of Atlantic Boulevard, Whipple Ave., Smith Street, and Gaynor. The recommendations are attached, everyone should have them. Um, Stephen Prestauer, the chief civil engineer, stated that the area did not warrant a traffic light, however, changing the configuration of the entrance at Atlantic Boulevard, and making there a small one-way portion on Whipple Avenue, um, the recommendations should be sent to the ordinance committee to take action on the report. And the meeting was adjourned at six-ten. So I'd like to entertain a motion to send this to the ordinance committee, for them to review and take the recommendations from the Rhode Island DOT.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilwoman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number twenty-four, Finance Committee Report. Town council discussion in action with regard to the Finance Committee Report presented by Councilman DeStefanis. Councilman?
Mr. President, we've had two meetings. Uh, the first was on Tuesday, December fifteenth, uh, you should have a packet on it. First item on the agenda was a tax abatements over a thousand. Uh, we received a request from GE Capital for eight thousand forty-five dollars. The committee chose to continue this, and we, we have sent Mr. Batty, um, a request for information. The second item on the agenda that evening was the policies and procedures of creating a town grant application program, um, and actually placing the application together, and putting together the restrictions, the guidelines, and the notifications for within that grant application. Um, the committee is recommending, now that we asked the council to accept, and refer to the ordinance committee.
Motion to be made by Councilman DeStefanis, I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brady.
You're referring, um...
The applicant, the grant, program and application.
This, this one right here, the one that...
Correct, the one that's attached.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't read it yet.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I need that motion.
Twenty-five, claims to make.
Wait, 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 I still got one more meeting.
Oh.
Mr. President, the second meeting was taken this evening, um, January fifth. Uh, the item on the agenda was the discussion possible board on the property located at Two Tom Street. We reviewed the lease, uh, that the administration and Mr. Denault from the Little Heroes Fund had put together, and the committee recommended in favor of approving the five-year lease.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I was just gonna say that. Could I make a second?
The, the, yes, I'm sorry. Within, within the minutes are the actual lease agreement, and the renovations that Mr. Denault and the Little Heroes Fund will be making to the property.
Okay, can we reiterate that motion, then?
Take, uh, make a motion to accept.
Councilman Juicy's made a motion to, uh, approve with exhibited attachment. Do I have a second?
So, second.
Seconded by Councilman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Twenty-five, claims to make. Town council discussion in action with regards to claims received by Mohammed Alal Alstasa of Three East Street, North Providence. Do I have a motion to send this to the claims committee?